Board meeting of the Buber County Board of Education Operations Committee. Here with myself and Tricia Fidrich up at the committee. And we do not have any board members online at this time. So our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I must admit, seeing it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in the good soul, the receiving of the world. All right, we need a motion to approve the amendment.
I hope that will be approved immediately.
Second, that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, two with one accent. Do we have any public comments?
No.
We can go out, we need to approve the October 12 committee meeting minutes.
I'm in favor of the October 12 committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two oh one. All right, OE personnel administration. Ms. Walton, do you want to kick it off or do we have a plan for, if anyone has presented?
I have a plan.
Do you have a plan?
So I have my team here with me today. And they're here because they are experts on specific areas they are. So they're, as we go through our presentation today, you know. And your questions that you need to ask. And so I'm just going to quickly do stand, I think you might already know that when we start to write the ready needs. They're, you know. We have Crawford, who's our HR officer. Rosa Robinson is our benefits administrator. Anita Parker is our evaluations supervisor. Britta Pender is our talent acquisition. Kiki Swinton is our director of employee services. And then Jennifer Statham is our risk manager. And then Matt Hart is, he is director of HR operations. So we're going to go through this OE a little differently this year than we've done before. And hopefully this is much more palatable, easy to understand work versus our normal 35 page.
I'm very happy about that.
All right, so OE for our operational reputation personnel administration. So what we've done in this OE was look at the policy and requirements that the board has once again. And we had broken the report down to cover the story of HR in terms of employees. Our recruitment, the employment processes, how we develop employees, how we evaluate and compensate employees. You will see the HR of the superintendent's interpretation. And since the OE have 14 subsegments in it. We took each subsection and outlined it to show what was included in that specific subsection. And in this, we included numerous facts. We included also with this artifacts for you. And I'm sure you've gone through this to read. And you've noticed that we also included hyperlinks so you can get to some of these programs and documents that we were talking about. And don't think you want me to go through the reading section summary, so I'm not going to get into this here specifically, we're going to do that. So we don't walk through the executive summary, but not very many specifics and I'll walk through what you can use. Your summary to go back and refer to and use for the manuals.
And Ms. Fidrich, please weigh in, do you prefer to have questions as we go or whole questions to the end?
I think we would like you to ask us questions as we come. Because we're going to cover each slide. It covers a different section of HR. And the questions will probably be freshening mine as we go through.
Okay.
So Robin, if you will pull that up for us.
Just before you start, can we bring people to access the hyperlinks? I mean, with like, which ones?
I just could not.
Yeah, you know, it ended up happening.
I tried to do that when I was preparing.
Yes, when we print, when I printed this object, I scanned the whole document rather than sending the PDF with the hyperlinks attached. So it's blue on here, but when I scanned the whole, because I wanted you to have the entire packet. It did, the hyperlinks didn't transfer, so I will send those to Robin and you'll have those, okay? Yes.
David, do you have Earl and Wayne?
Okay. So we're going to start with recruitment. And what we're going to try to do here with each one of these subsections. Is to explain to you what our processes are and there are some covages to make sure it's handled. What systems we use, what process we use. And how we actually walk from the beginning to the middle and end of hiring. So then starting with building, and with Britta, who is going to talk to me about everything she does as a talent acquisition specialist. And how we actually function as a recruiting team.
Okay, so recruitment, starting with recruiting, relationships are absolutely key. They're actually crucial. And so part of this, part of building our own talent pipeline includes the hosting of student, current interns, practicum and teachers. This year for the 2223 school year, we're actually hosting 95. And if you look at the left side, our chart on the left represents the college and the university partnerships that we actively have. So you can see our neighbors USC B, we have the most student teachers, practicums, interns with them. And then the list continues down. Some of the programs are online programs as well. We also have to the right, so if we take a look over to the right, that chart represents all of the different certification levels of those 95 students. So you can see our largest at 61 is child, is early childhood and elementary education. Now, when you look at that number 61, that number looks very high. What's really great and what I'd love to point out about this is that even though they're here for the 2223 school year. When we talk about interns, when we talk about practicums, when we talk about student teachers. Some of these could be sophomores, some of them could be juniors, some of them could be seniors. So some of them will be eligible for hire right now, but some of them were actively working to build those relationships. Build those connections with the schools. So once they're done with their intern, once they're done with their, you know, their hours, whatever that may be. We're able to help get them into the district as well, so starting that very early.
So just point of certification, you said there's certification, these are certifications going for, not certifications of currently.
Yes, yes, so these are the school programs that we share.
And how many of them are online?
So if you take a look at the college and university programs we have on here, so Liberty University. Grand Canyon University. Those are the two that are.
Yeah. But the rest of them are in the classroom.
So it just depends on what year the student is. So if they're sophomores, it may just be in and out for a couple of hours for, you know, the practicum. And then for some of the others, they could be in for longer. Okay, so like we said, the relationships, they really are key. So this starts when a vacancy is posted. Sometimes it even starts before them. But if we take a look, this is just a flow chart sample of how we actively recruit. So when a vacancy is posted, at times we'll jump into handshake, this is one of our recruiting platforms that we're going to dive into on the next slide. Then it really jumps into, once we're in handshake, we have all of our candidates. That's where we start with electronic conversations. We then delve into phone conversations, Zoom conversations, whatever means of conversation is best, whatever method of communication is best for that candidate. That's what we do. That also includes text messages too. Now, this could be the electronic conversations, phone conversations, Zoom conversations. This could be over a period of months, over a period of years. We have a student from South Carolina that we, we had actually been with her, talking to her for the past year. So it'd been a whole year and she had applied to a position from last year, wasn't quite ready, but we continued to work with her. Now, when we have all of these electronic conversations, phone conversations, Zoom conversations, I'd love to highlight the top seven competitive advantages. Because we are building relationships, but not only building relationships, but talking about what we offer. So the comprehensive induction program, especially for new grads, that is crucial, that is key. Especially when it's two years, you know, that's not something that's offered every, everywhere. Also the no cost after school childcare. Handshake is great because it's not just new grads, it's anybody who's interested in finding a job or an opportunity. And so if they've been teaching for years, that could be something that also would interest them. With educational support for teachers, professional developments, mentor programs. Then also our compensation, retention bonus, cost of living. When we build those relationships, we really tie in the location where we are. The weather, the lifestyle, different things that they like to do. Our benefits of retirement packages and then also our retro planning. And then jumping back into that, once we have them hooked, we go into Appletrack. So Appletrack is our system where we fully vet them. We can then invite them to our drop fairs, we just hosted a fall drop fair, we'll also be hosting a spring one. And then from there, we connect them with the principals. Then we go through the job offer, the hiring documents, the orientation, so it really is a comprehensive plan. Sometimes it takes days, depending on when they start the process, sometimes it takes years. Okay, so this is handshake, this is our platform that I mentioned briefly in the previous slide. But when you first log into handshake, this is what you see. So this is comprehensive too, just like our recruiting life cycle is. So if you look on the left side over here, a couple of things that I would love to highlight are candidates. So if we talk about candidates, each person on our team has the ability to send out a thousand messages each day. So what's really nice is we're able to reach 3,000 potential candidates that are interested in teaching on a regular basis. We're going in, obviously, we're very excited to do. You look at the top right, that's where you can see our messages, so we get messages back from our candidates. Now, when we go into that candidate hub, we have basic filters. You can filter by major, you can filter by graduation date, you also have the ability to filter by major. We have advanced filters too, so we can filter by institution type. When we get to institution type, that's really great because we can filter by Hispanic serving institutions. We can filter by HBCUs, Asian Pacific, Native Americans. And then we can also get into additional filters that include like diversity, inclusions and institutions. And then also extracurriculars. So we have like degree organizations, the commister programs. In regards to like science and math, like the National Science Teachers Association. So you can use all of these additional filters to really target what we're looking for in the jobs that we have posted. We can create different segments and campaigns to really hit those specific candidates. And then what's really nice too, this platform allows us to sign up for all of our virtual and in-person job fairs. So last month, we attended in-person App State. But then we have Quitts Town University, which is in Pennsylvania coming up, that's an online one. So we'll be able to reach all of those candidates. We have gone last year to Iowa, Northern Iowa. So it really allows us to reach the entire country. Texas A&amp;M, Alabama State. So we really have been able to cast this wide net and then also invite them into our job fairs, we host our events here. And then what we'll do is we'll host a little bit later, we'll do like 12 to seven, 12 to five, so that we can really accommodate those Midwest and Western candidates.
And Hitchcock is really targeted to colleges, right?
So, so it's targeted, if you notice, especially for the career fairs, it's targeted to new grads in perspective. You can sign up when you're a freshman, but when you sign up when you're a freshman, you can stay in that system as long as you want to. It's just linked to all.
But it is pretty particular, it's not a job recruitment, I'm done, this is how my understanding of this. It's for colleges to kind of, because it says here like you're not requesting on campus, so it's really geared towards people coming into the job.
Right.
Yes, I think it's cool, I just like making sure I understood.
And that's, yeah, I didn't understand, how do you get all those email addresses, Robin? You've got 3,000 a day, recruits per day, I mean, how do you, how do you get those?
Yes, so what's really nice is handshake. They, so we, they have these partnerships with all of the colleges and universities. So they're adding new ones every day. So what we do is we continue to build the relationships with these colleges and universities too. And what they do is they then register all their students, so it's this massive database. And what will happen is whether they're freshmen, sophomores, juniors, that's why the filters are so important. But what will happen is they can stay in that system if it's linked to like their college email address for as long as they want. So even though it really is geared for college, we do reach out to, we send those 3,000 messages a day. We will have people that have been teaching, you know, for five, six, seven years that have always wanted to relocate, it's really cool. Send them all of those advantages, you know, really structure it just like you saw on there. And they will come back and probably, you know, they'll say, I've always, always wanted to live here. And I'd love to learn more, and at least a phone conversation, and then getting them into our applicants.
And can you target it just to like some of our higher need areas, like are you just, you know, just certification, just ban?
Yep, and that's what the major categories works really well, so special education, secondary education, great filter, you can go secondary education. You could do the graduation date, so we just had December grads coming up. But then you can go a step further and you can go to like the different organizations. So you could go to the national association, you know, for science teachers, if it were secondary science teachers.
So two questions, one, how long have we been doing handshake?
So this is our second year.
I think this is a great initiative, but we're here about, have we considered handshake?
So.
To meet our hiring goal, Sessor.
So we have looked in the handshake premium?
Yes. I have to say it like, how much is it?
You know, I wish. But we do get excited, you know, I have a say in handshake premiums. We, we get excited, all of us, when we go in, in the mornings. To look in the operating corner to see what messages we got.
Yeah.
And it's, they're interested, set up those phone calls, to set up those Zooms.
And are you tracking like the conversion rate from handshake to interview to potential offer?
So what's really nice is that's one of the new things that we are working to add on our online applications. Yeah, because it's just so new, how did you find out about us still? So via handshake, that's our. Yeah, because it's just so new, how did you find out about us still? So being handshake, that's our really great idea that we could place in our career.
I think we started off with basics, initially increased. Our capabilities because it was, we found it was so cool and it's really worked out for us, so. Our price went up this year because we advanced those. So they tailor it to us and what.
You know, I mean, my head college is, and that's what everyone's doing, that's handshake.
So but to to your question then, so we can track like from start to finish to is. Employed with us because of having been contacted by handshake.
So what we have to do is we can take all of our new hires. We have to then, so we have to work handshake to do this, so we take all of those new hires and then we, they have to report that, they have to pull that list. Yes, so we're, so in in actually education, the education side of handshake is one of their newest segments. It's something that they haven't really, you know, they're actually working with, as we're working with them. So we have these monthly meetings, and so we give them continuous feedback too. So that was, your question was one of my questions that we had actually asked them in one of our meetings, and that's something that we.
Thank you.
Well, thanks to your point, uh, this will write about the primarily college students of handshake, um, Mr. D's gonna come up next and talk about our next section, which is marketing. This is a more broad-based um, approach to people that maybe not knew how to college, but people that come here to visit because they wanna live here and all of that.
Well, and I'd say is, I think one thing more is interested in seeing is like, what were the new combat, impressive times and new initiatives, and to me, this is like new initiative.
So marketing, well, um. This is a marketing effort that you just started this past spring, uh, this marketing effort was used to recruit education. Come surrounding counties that their teachers may be resigning. Or at the end of school year, or relocate. And we started this last spring. Because a lot of people sent out their intent forms uh, to come back the following year in January. So we decided to, we're gonna start this effort in March. To uh, to reach those teachers. Uh, the company has worked with us and tailored uh, the recruitment effort uh, to uh, the needs of youth county. I don't know if you guys have made with uh, GeoFencing. I had no idea what that was until I spoke with the company, but I thought it was very, very unique, where it involved uh, setting up virtual boundaries around. One area that tracked whatever, whenever someone goes into. A business with their mobile device, it automatically sends them. And they can click on that notification and pull up Hoover County's uh, uh, marketing strategy. Uh, they used, we used radio ads. Again, GeoFencing ads. Targeting uh, display ads, uh, I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to see that, but. Uh, in certain areas around Hoover County, uh, Charleston, in the Charleston area. There were billboards, we had six billboards up. And we also had a radio ad that that applied to that billboard. Targeted email was also went along, uh, GeoFencing. Uh, social media ads, targeted audio.
When you said company, is that Adams? So this is a billboard permission.
That that also went along with the uh, that marketing.
So I, I would just say it's. Would be interesting if you could mention the number of passes we got.
I'm sure they do that in airport.
Tanger Outlets is a good place where they would do it, um, down on Hilton Head Island, the area of uh. Uh, Caligny, you know, places where we have high traffic, high volumes of potential candidates.
They they told me that, where's, where those students were just graduates. And.
As of, I'm, you know, senior citizen level, why, I don't really understand, so like, like, how do they do that? Right.
And and I had, I had done researches myself, um, they would set up some virtual boundaries, so they have like a, a central area. Inside of uh, target. And that area will kind of uh, span uh, fan out. So as soon as you reach that area, you will receive a notification on your phone, they don't have to have any information, I guess, I guess it's just soon as your phone gets in that area.
What, what Hoover, and and if I am so off base, you let me know, because this is again, like. Alice, this is not where we grew up, this is not, um. So what are they, what are we sending, like, like, so if a student, you know, or somebody wants it with their cell phone to Tanger, I was just there, I didn't get any notification.
That is approved through uh, I think, yeah, you saw, I've been sending unit operators. Notifications on your, any kind of getting notifications on your phone.
So if you're in that vicinity and you have your location on, you may, next time you go on Facebook.
But Key, I, you know what, because that is weird how that happens, like. Shopping for something. It's a good indication that your location services are turned on.
So if you're traveling, so if you're out of time, I was in Houston recently, and while in Houston, something popped up for. And it was because my location was so.
Thank you. This is not just an HR report, this was so. Fix your location service.
Yeah, we can send your notification after this meeting. So alternative uh. Certification routes, um, this is another uh, recruiting effort. To uh, attract and bring employees on through an alternative route to certification, as you can see, I can't see it from here. But there are about, when I started in position, there were about three alternative routes to certification, there was ABC Teach. Uh, there was ABC Teach, there was Pace and American Board. Uh, and I now has Teach for America, so now you have, and KT. Now you have Carolina Cap. Uh, Teachers of Tomorrow. Teach for America is already in it, so currently we have uh. Seventy-three teachers holding alternative certifications in Hoover County. That's including all the routes that you that you see.
Can I kind of digress for just a second, because I've heard about some of these alternative things, they cost money, don't they? But doesn't the candidate have to pay something? Are they getting cheaper since there's competition, that just seems crazy for cheaper, like three thousand dollars or something.
And that that's in, over the course of three years, that is for materials. The application fee is one-time application fee, you want you in program. But you have to pay for the materials.
So this is like. You you don't take those, the courses that you take, they are, they are. Ailered on, we can specific, so you go up once, one time. And paying three thousand dollars to get that certification is well worth it.
So these are people that already have bachelor's degrees? So that's just like postdoc type of situation?
Yeah, a lot of times they're career changers, um, I know Ms. Federer, she mentioned uh, ACE. And so some of those career and technical fields, sometimes these folks come with like auto body experience already, industry specific experience that wanna become teachers. And so that's, those are a lot of these candidates as well. They have that opportunity, and I think one more piece about this, Reggie, is that with the um, um, alternative certification route. That allows them, like Ms. Watson said, to be in the school, working, receiving a salary, whereas if they go back to college now, they pay tuition, but when they do their student internship, that's an unpaid internship.
So uh, I'm sort of like a BA, let's say hypothetically, fancy land in math, and so a teacher, so you have some math teachers, so be a three-year program? And um, they would be getting paid, what would they, what their role be in this? Oh, that's excellent, so it's just another like professional development that you have to do.
And and I can tell you this, that we are working on. Having our own alternative certification program. Yes, so that we recruit our intern candidates and train them through a three-year program. And eventually have certified.
What's the, is there a pushback on people doing this, or are people like, okay, goodness, I have a path for the teaching, or they're like, oh, I don't wanna do. I'm just wondering, it seems like I've heard a lot of things about people wishing that they could become teachers, but it's such a hassle, et cetera, et cetera, do you hear pushback on these, or do people just don't know about?
They know about it, uh, for the most part. The state department used to come down, we offer a seminar. Actually, you know, I'll be able to say that, you have a bachelor's degree.
So what we will do with our program is we'll take out some of the. It will be here, we're training here, and our own coaches here, and certified here through the state. So we're gonna have a patient consist around. If you want in Charleston. I mean.
I'm surprised that the state's gonna allow the districts to to do that, that, I mean, it makes a lot of sense, but.
Really, yes.
Yeah, well, it makes a lot of sense, that way you're, you know, in the classroom and then.
Now they're gonna, they will, we have to solve their gap. And they will ultimately certify teachers, but it cuts out the red tape with.
I was just saying, we're actually looking to start with our critical needs areas, like highlighted math and science, so middle school and high school.
So I would think that there'll be a lot of retired people that maybe wanted to retire, but they're beyond this, you know. Um, how how are numbers increased, because how long have we been doing this, it seems. I'm just excited, because it seems like a really good solution.
We've been doing it, you know, to. When I started this job, the day we moved.
Her number's getting bigger, or is it even that same? Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Well, as I said, they're often more, more. Career technology, becoming experienced, we have a teacher at um, he better create colored relaunch. He's he's been, he's been a chef for a while, deciding on getting to teach. And uh, so he went through the K program, career technology, they gave him a masters. With uh, with the experience that he's been in. He just had to take post. To receive his uh, certificate, and this past year, he just received his uh, his license.
Semi-retired, and I'm lucky to work in schools, but I don't wanna. So now I. Yeah, but I think, you know, it's not like you have to wait. Jump right in and start teaching, yeah, just I did not realize this was that.
Could we add this piece to, you know, we talked about support and development, um, and and of 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 our employees. We also have one of our district mentors that is a a K specialist. So um, a lot of times you come from another industry or you work, you know, and then you retired and wanna become um, a teacher, there's that. Educational lingo and the special kind of different intricacies and nuances of being an educator, and one of our um. District mentors is designated as a person that will help those K people, so that's an extra level of support that they have in addition to when they receive the program.
Thank you.
International teachers can't be international teachers. Yeah, so we're trying to have approximately seventy, we have seventy-two uh, international teachers. To help with bases here in Hoover County, from thirteen uh, different countries. Thirty-nine of those teachers are. On an induction level contract here, and it's from. The purpose of that is to provide and support for those three years, because they have, yeah. As to what uh, yeah. They all, the additional support also lies in our practice. To get prepared for some. We uh, with those teachers, you know, they're coming from their, from their respective countries. We uh, plan to provide two celebrations, we'll bring all those international teachers together, so that they can meet one another. Possibly meet soon from their country. Last year we did this, it was, it was, it was a great experience with Israel. Uh, once we planned the event, the Jamaican teachers got together and planned. Sort of performed everybody a dance, song from Jamaica. So this year, and the teachers from other countries, you know, didn't do this, so this year. All the other countries planned it about there. Whatever, so, and so it was, it was good, it was great, uh. And to meet, and we wanna do that, to make them as comfortable as possible, because they dropped everything, their families, their homes, wherever to come. And work without you here. So we asked them to uh, to possibly al- also bring a cultural dish. Um, to share. And we, we provide them with a dish from. They wonder, what, what is barbecue?
So um, what's the status of this after all the curve up last year, are we still using them primarily, or are we?
Still using that, although part of the seven two teachers that we have, so we have twenty-three.
There's no way around the fact that they want the good teachers stay in, wants them.
In fact, the state just recently. Who brought out from a lot of districts. Because South Carolina has retarded immigration department. As bringing um, in uh, international teachers. And keeping them here, and they saw it as a way of ground immigration. So uh, they have now stayed at state. Of your total staff. As international teachers. So. States will be forcing everybody to to go back.
So they, um, international teachers can only stay five years, does does every teacher that come over, that comes over, has to start with induction year one? Or do they bring with them some advanced levels and don't have to go through that? I'm just saying, by the time you finish induction and then you go through ADEPT, I mean, there's almost time to go back to your home country, and that's just a lot of stress. And I, so do they have to go through that?
Yes, ma'am, the state department will not issue uh, professional license to international teacher. Because they've been, because they only here for three years, and every teacher in, that that comes to Hoover County. Uh, if they're not within the states, has to go through uh, induction. So we we may, we put them through induction one, two, and three, because we don't wanna add any stress. Because if they, if they don't do well, one thing we can do is provide an official support, so wanna give them support for those three years. That fourth year they go through formal evaluation.
Right.
Fifty years they, they're on a G, uh, NGBG contract. So they can't get a continuing contract.
Those induction years takes them away from any evaluation piece and stress with having to be that. So they just get that full support for the first three years, nothing but support, no evaluation.
But they do get their experience. Once that's processed, and the state department, so if they come with a masters. You know, ten years of experience, once this process, then we pay masters and teenagers.
And induction does not affect itself. So they can teach for three years and every year they're removed.
Alright.
So moving along, we're still on the employment uh domain here and um.
Oh, we're talking about volunteers.
Yeah, talking about, yeah, but but cause we, cause what the, what the operational expectation says is that we conduct reasonable background increase on volunteers. And so um we do conduct uh the extensive background increases on all of our employees, which was about three hundred and ninety new hires last year. Uh but Jen's gonna talk to us now about the uh the volunteers.
So in twenty twenty one, we were using V I B. And so that contract ended and we selected a new vendor, which is Sterling, we can jump to them. For twenty one, twenty two, that did not work out great. So we put that back out again, so we have a new vendor that we're in the process of getting started called Raptor. Um Raptor is used by Charleston, Greenville, um they have a bunch of other modules that we're hoping to consider. Once we get the visitor volunteer set up. So we're in the process of setting it up now and we will start rolling it out to the schools in January. So that's what we're. So.
What's the difference? What happened to Sterling?
Well, Sterling, Sterling relied on Identikit, and Identikit relied on Sterling. So the the volunteer process application was two parts and it frequently failed. We had about a ten percent fallout where it just didn't process through. We had a hard time getting volunteer cards out. I mean, the actual background checks for Sterling was very nice. So if I could just pick from all these vendors and compile my own vendor, it would be great. But it was just so cumbersome and it was difficult for our users um to use. And Identikit, while it worked, had worked initially for the visitor management. And we had hoped to expand it to the volunteer. It was very rudimentary. It was not very sophisticated. Whereas Raptor is very sophisticated and has a lot of options for us. It has volunteer engagement as part of it. So volunteers will have a lot more control of be able to send out invites to what they can do. They can communicate, like if you were on the S I C, you can communicate there amongst all the S I C within Raptor. Um will have a lot. So and they'll have all the things together. We'll be able to merge everything together. So they are, will allow us to upload all of our existing approvals. So right now they're going between two systems. Will just upload everything into Raptor. Um so we will be able to have that and we'll have our contractors, we have the third system we've been looking at separately. Contractors will also go with the Raptor too. So when you look at a home stream on the Raptor, it just goes volunteers, contractors, you can have, there's an employee module if you wanna add it. There's a student module we can add in later, but it's all together, visitors and volunteers. It's just one thing. So it was much more comprehensive. It's much more in depth. So um.
And they take my picture. And what they said, they're like, we're getting new things. So I guess. Um are we gonna get new? Like whatever the sticker that you have to wear, that was once where, I mean, is that part of Raptor or are we gonna try and integrate?
Yes, and what we're doing is, we're starting, we're gonna start with a couple of schools. We're gonna start with a couple of four schools. Um and get them settled and see what the problem are. We're gonna start with several tech savvy schools that have really good volunteer coordinators. Um and get them set up and see what the issues are. But it will have now a kiosk. So once you've kind of come in and you've kind of been in, you will be able to go in, like if you're a volunteer, you can just scan your license. We're gonna go away from the permanent badge. So it's gonna scan it every time you scan your license. And we'll say, you'll say, oh, I'm here. I'm going to be a classroom volunteer today. I'm a chaperone. You'll do the basic stuff. And then we'll print out the volunteer badge each time with the real picture, not a blog. And you'll take that from the receptionist. And then we'll be able to track hours much better. We'll be able to track organizations better. It will have a much better engagement. I'll be able to automatically send out the orientation as opposed to rely on it and do it to schools to do it. It will be mandatory. As part of your process. So I really think it's something what we're doing.
Does it integrate with hours?
From us, let's go with from us. Yeah.
Okay, uh that's excellent. And then um so I thought just to add a quick conversation, you know, we had a comment about wearing. Matching T shirts or something to volunteers or groups or whatever. Uh is that something that we we don't really have? I don't know if that's an H R. It's gonna be really volunteered, like the rules and regulations for volunteering. Not so cumbersome that no one wants to volunteer.
They're under communications.
Volunteers now. Volunteers should have always been the communications department. But years ago, we can't, two superintendents ago, um no one wanted to take it on. So they just said, oh, give it to H R. So they stuck it in H R. So now it's gonna be lifted out of H R and put in communications.
Well, the management, the administrative rule isn't communications. Communication is actually hiring someone who will be taking.
At coordinate this, cause I mean, we we need volunteers.
We do. And we're really excited about the volunteer engagement piece and how these volunteers have more access to what's going on. And then being able to upload the events so they can sign up for events to get more information. And then the organizations that they're involved with, they can communicate within Raptor on those sorts of things.
That's exciting.
It is. It'll be much, it's really the next level. It's much nicer.
We're trying.
It doesn't cost any more than Identikit. We are spending almost about forty thousand dollars a year to maintain it. And then we have to spend about sixty thousand dollars for new equipment. So we didn't have blogs. Uh but it was time to update the equipment. So all the schools will have an initial kind of a kiosk. So once you kind of have, know what you're doing, you can kind of come in and scan and start the whole process and kind of fill it out. You know, what's going on? Where am I going? Who am I doing? But you still have to run it past the receptionist to verify that you are Patricia Federich, who you are, who you say you are. And then they will get, you'll get the badge from them and they will let you into the facility.
Um so so to. She says it's about forty, it's about forty thousand dollars.
Annually, it's about forty thousand dollars.
So so with all these uh. Volunteer reports that we have, they all have annual costs?
Yes, yes. Identikit was about the same cost. To get the kiosk set up for each of the things and the badge printers and everything.
It's for every school, just for one time.
One time payment. For this time, do you set up the equipment to to bring it up to speed? And then that's not a recurring cost going forward. The kiosks will be there going forward and those will be kind of in the the area as you go into the school.
And I'm concerned about the part of the, the printing of the. The the printing versus the badges because if it would be, if we have a. Volunteer and so on, that that would not move that, but basically they had to get a brown, brown, turn it on. Figure e- every time, but they don't want to feature that sticker drops or something. How it's be identified. And then also, I can tell in terms of volunteer, I can determine. Uh as far as, as far as, as far as badges, I mean, I I hear volunteers kind of time. They those go, I think that it takes them time. Getting in and out of building and versus, you know, doing it. That's my, the kiosk has to watch this kiosk, make sure the volunteers do this. So that, that's a little concerning to me. I've had, I also, that a lot, I've been along the way that it costs more money, but.
Pretty much all the vendors have moved away from badges because they want to have the real time scanning every single time. Even if you're an approved volunteer, when you scan your license, it will run it through the sex offender registry every time you terminate a result. And it makes sure that her, because we give, if you're an approved volunteer, it doesn't follow schools. It will check that your volunteer status remains active. So that if one of the schools have revoked it because of, there was no trespass order or we had a restraining order, then it will pick it up. Whereas a lot of times if they had those badges, they were a little bit more lax, I think, about the badges if they had it. So having them have scanning time and then getting the badge verifies that they are back acting each time.
It's from a safety perspective. It also tracks who's in the building. Yeah, that's something that we talked about during our R F P is being able to track who was physically in the building. So then we incorporate them into our, if we, if there's ever a need or an evacuation or anything like that, we're able to account for. But I think that's the stance what you're thinking is. The volunteer badges had access to the building. But volunteer badges, when you use them, didn't give any access. We don't give access to go.
Right, so they can, they can sign and sign out.
It was just a badge to hang on there to say, I'm in the building, I'm a volunteer. But it did nothing in terms of security.
Right. And then this, like you mentioned before, we'll actually have a picture of the volunteers. This will allow them to verify each time, whereas the badges do not have a picture on them. So that's another security issue is it will require that you have a photo ID and it will put your picture on it. So it allows that verification that this person is the volunteer or the visitor in the building.
And so I think the biggest problem maybe is some of the people are gonna show up and they don't have their ID.
Well, we are going to have a workaround for that and we will be able to have an option for some of our folks that may not have. We will set out what is appropriate ID. So it may be a certain sort of thing. And sometimes people may not have my ID, but.
Wasn't that you like forget it at home when you're trying to volunteer?
So but let's say you do forget it at a town. We will go through these procedures, but you've been through your s- your schools many times. They will be able to pull up when they type it in, even though, right, they will pull up your picture because you've been in before. So at that point in time, the receptionist, I can say, yes, this is, you know, who's in front of. Yes, so that will help with some of those things.
From a security standpoint. Right, this is.
Yeah, it's better.
This is like much better.
Well, I mean, I. To some degree, I I still, you know, in terms of, and so in the past, it's my first, my standard that that normally that we we run that. We we run the uh. People regularly um, we're volunteers, so so we haven't done that.
No, we run them at least annually or annually, whatever we decide to do. We redo them. But the badge never gave you access into the building. You still had to go through the receptionist and wait in line and be scanned and approved and have reception.
Right, but my, 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 my question was. So I was, I was thinking that we, in terms of not, not the baddest, we're giving them access in the building. My terms is, my question is, in terms of. Running the background. So we just did it annually, not every time. And now we're talking about doing it every time. This is that, is that one of the.
What we have always done is the full background check. We do it on like an annual basis typically. But this will run the sex, right, we never did run the sex offender registry. This will run the sex offender registry every single time you walk into.
Is it charging?
I have one comment I think we should talk about and maybe even a motion about getting that volunteer piece and putting it into communicating with the public. Cause H R, if it's not an H R thing, it's communication, it shouldn't be O E. So our policy chair is sitting here when he wants, it's it's O E four point two, right?
O E four point two is conduct reasonable background with employers.
So prior to use in the services of any volunteers. Yeah, so if, but if they're gonna, if communications is gonna handle volunteers, we should move them to communication. So it's. So do you wanna bring the joint into bringing up as part of my, I don't even, do we? I just need to bring it up. Well, I guess we need to vote to send it to policy.
Just in, I think in your report, in your chair report, yeah, just to have it on that. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
It's policy, sorry.
Yeah, we just need to send it to the policy, however, whatever the process we decided on.
Right.
And I think it is just.
Move on that policy.
Yes, it's already approved in H R, but this, it's been moved out of H R. It's going to be moved into communications.
But my policy that I was looking for is to the H R is is the uh is. If this agreement, any, any, any changes in in terms of what what Janine, her hiring of the person is. And 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 that could bring some different.
We wouldn't change the policy, the board would have to change the policy. All it, all, all that is saying is instead of H R doing, right now they're bringing the report under their H R report. Instead of coming out of H R, it's brutal, bringing the same report under.
Which one? And I still don't. Four point two, conduct a reasonable background increase and checks in prior to use on the services of any volunteer who have direct communication with students. And I think I'd move it to O E ten, oh, we love communicating with the public, I guess.
So O E four point two. I think that makes, I think one.
Next. Alright, rounding out the uh the domain of um employment on the next slide there. Um one, one of the uh O Es, which is I believe is uh four point three, talks about assigning sufficient staff to meet the needs of each school. And um we brought this slide for you so you could see that we do uh have a partnership, ongoing communication with the budgeting and finance office. Um assigning sufficient staff has to do in particular um with certified staff and the assignment of the uh student teacher ratio. So um it would probably be helpful for the board to know um what that ratio is. And if you take a look on the left column there or the left uh chart, we have the elementary, general ed, teacher funding ratios. Now, prior to COVID, what you see where it says non-high poverty schools. Um that was the the standard um funding formula or standard staffing formula. So um when COVID hit, um it became apparent that there was a greater learning loss in some institutions rather than other institutions. A lot of times that's based on high needs. And so um financing, budgeting work together to put in a uh. I guess I'd say a pro-rated formula. So that high poverty schools, which are identified as greater than fifty five percent free. Free reduced lunch, um and very high poverty schools designated at greater than seventy five percent um. Free reduced meals. And so that funding formula has been adjusted for um a smaller s- teacher to student ratio. Um and we've done that for the elementary level, um because of course early intervention is is critical. We've done that also for our K eight institutions. And for the middle school, um and as well as the high school, we have, I think, one high poverty high school. Um that being Whale Ranch Early College. And so their, their funding formula in order to meet the sufficient needs of the building um is is rated differently.
No, I have a question as much as just um thank you. Because this is something that that we talked about, you know, um about the need for high poverty schools to maybe not have. When did all this start?
This started during the last budgeting season.
So so for this school year?
Yes, ma'am, for this school year.
We have been doing staffing before we actually put the woman together. We have been um. Setting aside extra staff at high poverty schools, but it wasn't official. We did not put anything in writing. Last budgeting system uh process, we put it in writing. So it now is a part of. So everybody knows that it is in writing, it's part of the form, it is official.
Right. And so Alice, I think that's the part that just, um I just had this kind of like overwhelming, like yay. Because, I mean, we know that, we know that school with high poverty need that that um student teacher ratio to be um smaller. And there's something about putting it in writing, because you've always heard the ratio is twenty five to one, or yeah, twenty four to one, whatever it might be. And so just blanket, to know though that in a school, and we know we have schools that are over seventy five percent. Free and reduced. So anyway.
Yeah, probably. I think they're about fast range size reduction teachers, C S Rs, and that's how we allocated.
Just to pontificate, I don't, I think it's great. You know, you have schools like Hilton Head where you have some affluent populations, which also have some really high need populations. And they're gonna get jammed in for the highest, you know, class size. This is not you guys, I'm just saying, society at large. I understand why we're doing it, but it does disadvantage kids that have the high. Class size, class size. So there's no way to like tailor it to. You wouldn't wanna hide. In a school. It just is unfortunate because those kids are are not gonna get benefits.
Well, they're still Title One schools, and so, you know, like the early childhood center, I B, creative arts, those are Title Ones, yes. And so they do benefit from this um staffing.
Does Title One means that you've had X. What is that percent?
Uh it depends. That's at the purview of the superintendent now. I believe historically it's been, I think, what, sixty two percent somewhere? That's correct.
The only issue with that is that goes off bringing these lunch applications, right?
Yes.
So. And the high poverty schools is more in a. So, and the high poverty schools is more an assessment of other factors in the area, right, like you killed the head, it's now. Gonna get classifieds, low, high poverty school, it's just, I think that the high poverty schools, and I talked about this a ton, you can say use. Application for other things, there's, there's more to it.
Yes.
So it does disadvantage high income areas with large, low income population. Just throwing that.
Sorry. So now we go into the professional development, and you will know that you have some artifacts in your. Attached to your. This is not something that's covered in the OE, but we are giving it to you so that you can take a look at that in form. How we look in terms of where staff, it is what buildings there, and you look back on so. Are you, are demographics, because I know there was some point this year or last year, we talked about. Looking at the demographic, different wise. The fact there is that um this tells you each school. Each position. And it looks at the demographics of each. The demographics of each building, down to percentage of diversity in each school, so this is not a notice.
I think someone actually asked for this information. So thank you.
Um, we, we always keep information, it's something that. So that's, I think, they don't, it's a, probably about thirty years.
You know, at least twenty-two years towards the. And then every, every year we send it to Ms. Cartland so that she can also afford that patient to also, uh, UCR.
I have to file a report as part of our new segregation, yeah, so.
I think that's excellent, luckily this really standing out to me and this is just, you know, identify trends, I mean, it's such a large Hispanic. Population and really the. Get very few staff, and I think we're related, um, disadvantaging some of the data, it's not we are, but it's. Nice hats, the speakers, it's cultural.
Um, did I include the participate in the international?
So pretty much anyone that I'm here that is unable to, you know, all is probably.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the state says, you know, our teachers, our ASOL teachers can have a case of like ninety-one. Unless it's gone down a bit, but I mean, we know that that's. Well, is it, is it ninety-one?
Ninety, yeah.
And I think. It's untenable and it's in it, it's, it's, but still it's all these unfunded things from the state that.
It's, I would love to walk into school like when I see Emperor Rodriguez speaking, but I forgot to speak in Spanish.
Absolutely.
I'd love to see that.
One thing I thought was really interesting in this data that you all um provided is the age ranges. And just the kind of quick math, I didn't actually put it in the calculator, but it looks like the age twenty to twenty-five is like twenty percent. Of our total, sixty-two out of three hundred and three, like twenty percent, that's. That's a lot of new teachers, so we're un- inexperienced, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
And also I just want to add, one of the things that our program, our lead program, is when, you know, the speakers. Bring in people in the local community, pulling them in and into our schools.
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to, I was, I did have a couple of questions in, in, in terms of. Was this anything on my way here, my, my recruitment, my recruitment, and I would try, I would ask some questions, um. In turn, in terms of, what do you want to ask after that?
Yeah, do you wanna, since we're circling back, you wanna get through the whole presentation, then circle back?
Yes, ma'am, our training and development, um, so this, this is a slide that just shows you a two-year comparison um of the ongoing training and development. That we have going on in our districts um by month. And so um this is a, a ten thousand foot view of everything that happens, whether it's in. Uh instructional services, student services, human resources, even school-based professional development. Um, so you have a, a graph there of the offerings, um, we have um. A professional growth manager that is on our staff and that is the person that manages the, the house where all of this professional development goes. And then can make sure that um there's verification of continuing education units, um recertification credits and all of that. To make sure that teachers, uh certified staff and even classified staff have up-to-date uh credentials and training. So this is, this is helpful for us to know the number of um trainings that we offer.
I think this difference has always done well with offering. Indeed, I mean, there's no reason why someone shouldn't get their five-year.
Right.
Uh, recertification and not have, being able to, to have all the points they need.
That's right.
Um, is it still my learning plan?
It's actually called uh professional growth now, but it's, it was formerly, and it's on the same platform.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is all true for.
Yes, ma'am.
Is Apple.
It is.
Yeah, they bought it, right?
They bought, yes.
Yeah.
One-stop shop.
No, wait, in terms of, it's training and development, can you tell what, what it was that was selling it right, and this issue?
Well, I guess it all depends, you know, on. What, um, there are certain trainings, like concussion protocol, that all athletic directors have to make sure their coaches have every year. Um, special education teachers, teachers that work with, with high needs populations in terms of uh special needs populations. Always have to uh redo their crisis prevention intervention training, CPI training, so we have those type of annual trainings. Um, even if the teacher goes to become certified as an evaluator, or goes to become a mentor and gets that credential. That, all those kind of trainings are um part of this, but what you'll also find in these numbers are individual school-based trainings. Um, instructional services division, what they work on at the school level are the professional learning communities. And so um principals have the autonomy to be able to put their professional learning communities in here as a way of tracking um in the. Employee participation, um, the other thing is that's big in our, in, in certification realm is read to succeed, that's the act um passed by the state. And so we all have to have uh read to succeed uh credentials, and that can all also go in this training development module.
I, I, I do that, I do, and I know, so basically also, then this is, is also be participated from. And, and then this is, this is all staff, this.
Um, no, that's not just trips.
Local, local district providing professional development, so that's whether it's here in the media center, they were offering professional development. At the individual schools, it's not professional development trips, this is professional development that we're offering here in this.
Yes.
So, so, so it's, so, okay, so, so basically, what you think, so they basically, this is just in-house, this is not.
That's correct, so if I go to a conference, I can get recertification credits for attending the conference, but that will not be.
So, so, so my question is, do you have, you have a tracking of all that, of what we offer in?
Yes, yes, I do have, I pulled, what I do is I pull these, I pull this, I have a spreadsheet that is pages and pages and pages and lines long. Um, for each one of the events that is listed here.
And, and for it to be, uh, I will say for it to be this much uh in-house training, that is my, that, that, that is awesome.
Yes.
That, that does show that, that the district is, is uh, we can go tax credit, showing that we are trying to save money, that we are doing in-house training here. To keep people from probably, if, if, if that needs to, I, I do, I do.
Thank you, and we've got a lot of really brilliant people within the district that can, that are fully capable of conducting training, so um, that's one of the things that actually keeps teachers in, in the classroom. Is having that uh input, to being able, being able to train, being looked at as a leader in the districts.
So we even go to staff, um, any professional development that we give credit for. Because we are responsible for redoing certificates, so we need to verify the professional development is. Um, qualified to go toward our recertification, those um professional development must be approved ready. So when a principal comes up with, I wanna do professional development for anybody, it runs through him and he says, yes, you can do that. And it's not, it does not go in my mind until he gives.
Mr. Smith, I know you're gonna ask about classified employees, and so those come through me and we operate. Um, last year we offered a, a, a two-day training, it was actually over four days, and so office professionals. Um, principals could send them during the summertime to come for a two-day training, and so it was the same training on the first two days and a different training on the second two days. And so that way they have a flexible schedule, so we even tried to make sure that we scheduled it in a way that we can get the maximum participation. So um we are, and classified folks have access to trainings as well.
That's good, I, I'm sure they definitely hit the road.
Yes.
Also, this has been every classified person that has a bachelor degree, we reach out to.
Yes.
They're spending time in classroom with their kids, so.
So, just, Mr. D just said, you, um, Alice mentioned that, so when you have to approve the, um. Whatever is being offered for recertification credit and so on, do you confer with ISD to about the content?
No, ma'am, I'm gonna read the content. Training, I'm not some, the things in there that, that are not trained, so the trainings, I have to make a decision whether it's training or not. And I will call the person that is hosting the. Training to get some more information. Like I have Miss Swin call me on time and say, you know, I need you to prove this now. But, but I know of a version of trainings, but yeah, they say, oh, I, I go.
Now, if you say a law on they, they, maybe some of the academic content, like DLCs.
I'll, I'll call the, I'll call the person that's hosting the training.
And usually they have to come with an explanation of.
Right, right.
So you can make a decision. Apply, and then of course, you get.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So we can move into this other part of development, and I thought it was important just to highlight this program, so we turn this over to Mr. D to talk about induction.
So as you, as you can see, uh, conducting uh contracts, I mean, uh. Hundred and twenty-nine institutions that are in the background, and those are new teachers that are coming in, whether they're international. Or on the fresh side of college, so we, that's, that's true, we have a hundred and twenty-nine induction teachers. That move, we have eighty-seven teachers that are induction two and eighty-one teachers that are induction, what is that? Too fun, good. I was trying to see if you math and. But, but we, again, we have, you have quite a few teachers that are on induction contract, one, two, and three, and they're doing that. Induction contract, again, provide tremendous uh support, mentors, you. Great job of supporting this teaching, they're needing school, principals can contact me and say, uh, you know, this teacher is struggling, uh, what can we do? We send them, we send them.
Sounds like I'm doing the math, this won't show up, that's like seven percent of our teachers, our brand-new teachers, right, that seems.
Yeah, seven percent, how we want to teach.
But I think with the mentors, you want to talk about the specializations, and how we have some specialized folks in the mentor.
Yeah, well, so we have, we have, uh, 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 which is, which is very fortunate, we have a special ed person. That specializes in uh special ed. So there's a special ed concern, she, she's my go-to person, we have a secondary, we have a middle, we have an elementary. We have Kate, uh, we have Suzie, who actually is what, uh, retired mentors. And our. National.
In finance as well.
Yes.
We have, we have a sixth member of our mentor team, and they're, they're, they're bad.
They, they're bad as far as even the training, and they have gone so far, each of them has, the state has come up with uh. Three special area evaluator uh instruments for three disciplines that I'll talk about briefly when I come. And each one of them has chosen at least one area to become certified in, not so that they can guide with. But so that they understand the state's expectations for folks that are those um professional areas.
So these are mentions of the teachers, are they full-time ventures or? And that correlates to the coordinator position, all that, we have these open coordinators in finance.
It does not, it does not, these are strictly in, in-class support for teachers.
So typically, maybe there's a teacher that's new in finance and they would go and kind of give some advice, co-teach whatever.
Teach.
Teachers, you know, and with them, they have. Seminars, five, six seminars go out, yeah, with, with induction one seminars, induction two seminars. They'll have one south and one north, they meet with these teachers.
And classroom is an individualized differentiated support, so if it's classroom management, they can work on that, if it's lesson planning or assessment, evaluation. You know, that's what they work on, the goal is to be able to get them ready after their second year of induction for uh the first year of evaluation.
And to add even more onto this, when we, when we recruit, we talk to our PNS in the kitchen, we talk about the induction one and the induction two. We talk about our mentors and sometimes with specialty because it's a high area, Shelley Ford will connect. Will also speak, so there's additional conversations that we have, they meet with the principals, they'll meet with the mentors, we really analyze everybody.
Just going down the line here.
So, uh, recently they asked me to do a session with the induction teachers of all levels, induction one, two, and it will focus on work-life balance, self-care. Mental wellbeing, um, being able to show up as your best selves for doing the work that they do, because this is a new realm for them, so it's, it's about making sure. That they're actually able to take care of themselves in the process of that, and that was very close.
Something next, um, so that's important, workers compensation, which is the employee injuries, when I'm looking at injuries and I'm seeing trends. Or I'm concerned about what I'm seeing, um, like just last week, I called Shelley and said, hey, we have a fairly new teacher. Um, it's a tough class, we seem to have a similar load of issues in the classroom. Um, cause you can work with her and really work on somebody's strategies, and she'll go, this is what we're doing, I'm like, well, this is what I'm seeing. And so then we worked together to try and look at, you know, from my pretty well and very different perspective, you know, I'm trying to stop teachers from being injured. So we kind of look at it from this perspective, and then Shelley's like, well, I can spend some more time and we can look at this, or maybe marginal this sort of thing.
Yeah, so.
If uh, if any information I'm meeting mentors. Not too visible, try to meet, and during the meeting, try to get a gauge on, you know, which teachers have struck. And depending on what they say to me, I'll reach out to this, this one, I say, hey, this teacher, we need some emotional support.
How long have you had this? Yeah, this is, it's been a lifeline, I mean, there, there have been. When, when I was in the classroom and teachers, it was, it's just a lifeline because it's not a building mentor. It's someone that's outside the building and you can talk freely to them usually, you know, um, they have inside mentor, building managers too. But this is just someone that has the district level experience, and so it's been years, right?
On the outside, on the outside, it comes, it comes.
You could even just price the value they bring.
I'm gonna say about, well, my question in terms of, are they subcontractors, I mean.
No, certified teachers.
But, but they're, they're not just being paid, they're actually teaching, teaching the class.
They're teaching teachers.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's like, it's on-the-job training, intensive training.
Right.
And like Mr. D's mentioned, all the seminars and everything is.
Right, everything there is an overview counter, you know, they can share. We have six district mentors, but every teacher has a district mentor. We have six district mentors. Every teacher has a district mentor and every teacher has a mentor inside of the building. Mentor staff.
Right.
So they have two mentors a day.
So the mentors in the building are full time teachers.
Right, 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 right. Okay, but this role we have six districts. Yes, sir.
So what we call those instructions, we did are full release. They're easily released from any teacher duties. All they do is work with teachers. It's full release. In their own right, yes. Yeah, they are. They are.
That can be evaluated.
But that's the development part. We're getting into evaluating.
Okay, that'd be great. An onion.
Well, we have fourteen, that's fourteen different, uh.
So before we start talking, she's going to talk about teachers. I will just, um, mention she knew that. One hundred percent all the principals were evaluated. And principals evaluated through the depth system. Through the state department, it is called depth. And, um. And. Teachers are evaluated through a depth. So a depth and depth.
So what about an assistant person on up at that?
So I'm gonna let Anita do this. She knows this pretty, uh, you should make it just a run through what you might wish to answer. Better questions. And just piggyback on what Alice said, uh, both of those systems, the principal evaluation system. And the teacher evaluation system, um, are both mandated by the state of South Carolina. And they've developed the performance standards for each group. And as far as the teachers are concerned, um, the different categories of teachers, um, predicts their evaluation, uh. Uh, system or their evaluation instrument, I should say. And on the sheet that you have, if you look at the left, uh, hand circle, the pie chart. Robin back, back one slide. There you go. If you look at the left pie chart, you'll see the four broad categories of teachers. All teachers are evaluated every year, just like all principals. Are evaluated every year. What changes is according to their contract level and their, um, certificate level. Um, and how they advance to the next evaluation type. But here you see the four broad groups of classroom teachers, then school counselors, uh, media specialists and speech language therapists. And for each of those groups, there's a different instrument, which I referred to earlier when we were talking about mentors. And I said, each of them has chosen to choose one of those special areas. And that's fairly new, like within the last few years. And the majority of the mentors also are certified to evaluate, regular classroom teachers also. Um, on the right hand side, the other pie chart then breaks it down into the type of evaluation. And you see their G B E formative and summative. The G B E is an advanced, um, evaluation process. Uh, teachers that are engaged in this process are teachers who have already met the state's requirement to advance their certificate, which is. The certificate is issued by the Department of Education. Contracts are issued by districts. And, uh, so to advance that, uh, to participate in a G B E evaluation type. They have already met the state's requirement to move to a professional certificate level. Those teachers who are being evaluated in formatively would be those who are receiving support. Of those who are going through their recertification year every five years. So that would be induction teachers. And those teachers who have been teaching at at least five years and it's time to renew their certificate. They had, that means they have a professional certificate already and it's time to renew that for that five year cycle. The summative evaluation is that formal, uh, evaluation that is, that teacher is engaged in. To meet, to show their proficiency in meeting the state's expectations for all teachers. And they have an expensive process that they go to go through. But this means every principal is evaluated every week.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, just like all teachers.
That was put there that every one of our, uh, thirty three principals was evaluated on time and. And actually, in the whole entire state of South Carolina, at the last scassamine, they said every principal in the state was, um, evaluated on time. And they met all, all districts met the criteria this year.
So it's scassamine hundred percent.
And so on the next slide. Thank you, Rob. On the left hand side, you see that chart. This breaks it down more into the different contract levels. In the state of South Carolina, there are three contract levels, induction, annual and continuing. Induction means those most novice teachers and the continuing contract is at the total other end of the spectrum. Once a teacher gets to the contract, to the continuing contract level, they're there for the entirety of their career. As long as they keep their certificate valid. Um, within these contract levels, as you notice, I'm gonna go down the order of this chart so that it makes more sense. You see the first one says no data. The reason that, um, that might exist in, we didn't, didn't mention the system. Where all of this documentation occurs, it's something called S C V, even another acronym. And it's an online platform into which all of that, uh, information is stored. Um, no longer are we under all of these different forms. Would you make, in the, uh, other system would say T. And this one is now South Carolina teacher standard is four point. So it's different. And the reason you might see that is if an evaluation has to be discontinued for any reason throughout the year, like. Teacher may have gotten sick and couldn't carry it out, um, or some other emergency like that. May have happened and we just discontinued and carry it over the next year. Or someone may come and they resign. We discontinued the evaluation. So then, uh, at the end, we have no data on that person. Then you see the letter of agreement. A letter of agreement is pretty much as the name implies. They have agreed to circuit our district for a certain period of times. So they could come knowing that. We're searching for a teacher and let's say they begin the year with us, knowing that by December they are likely, you know, not to be employed in that position anymore. And then additionally, there's a certain day count that the state has in, in place. It has to be at least hundred fifty two days. The teacher has to be employed for the state to, uh, deem their evaluation valid and that they will accept the results. So anyone who starts after that date, and it's usually about mid October, they will receive a letter of agreement. So there's no obligation for them to stay with us and no obligation for us to hire them back. Um, the induction, uh, contract level, you see there's induction one, two and three. And as Reggie has indicated, that, uh, has to do with their year, the one, two and three, which year they're in. And typo support that they give, that's, that's not, those are not years of evaluation, Alice said. The state department means that years of support, the typo support they get at each one of those levels is differentiated. So as you might imagine, an induction one teacher gives a whole lot of support about the whole gamut of what it takes to be a professional teacher. And then the second year, it's, it starts to be more focused on the needs of the teacher. And, and getting more into the areas of specialization. Again, say if they're especially a teacher or if they're a speech language therapist, the school librarian. Those kinds of things. It starts to get more and more into that. If a person goes to induction three, most often that is, as we've indicated, uh, folks who are international teachers. Or teachers that we might see have promised, but still need another year of support. And so the state has put in place the opportunity to do that. And another reason they did that was because as Reggie mentioned, the whole, um, smorgasbord. Of alternative routes to education, most of those programs require up to three years. So a teacher cannot be engaged in the formal evaluation process until they have met some of those, um, requirements within the program. That they are participating in. And then the next contract level is annual. The state has written into their regulations and statutes. Uh, that a teacher can be on an annual contract for up to four years. During that first annual contract is the year that they are, uh, engaged in a process where they demonstrate. Their proficiency to move from that initial certificate to a professional certificate. And, um, there's a process, if they're not successful, um, they do, uh, get to engage in that again. But beyond that, most teachers are successful during that first year. But after that, the second, third and fourth year. Um, then they are engaged in what we call G B E, goals based for student learning objectives and evaluation type. Then looking over at the right hand side of that pie chart is, as that puts us together, it, our greatest or largest group of teachers are those. Who are continuing contract teachers. And that speaks about retention. Because that should be the largest group. Once they go through the evaluation, uh, processes. And the support and the professional development that we offer, then they stay. And so we have those veterans on board, uh, to continue each year. And then you also see where he has included. Those three, um, special areas as the state refers to them, the speech therapists, school librarians and school counselors. Um, so every teacher in every discipline is evaluated every year. And there are also smaller groups such as, um, coaches and, and, uh, that group that also, uh. The Department of Education allows districts to using those standards and expectations for teachers. Develop their own district, um, um, process for people in those very specific areas.
That come up with a lot of information, but it would, it would help, like you, you can do words and, and if we could look that up or if, if you read, read it now, we can go back and maybe because. Late I go home, I'll give this graph. And try to remember what some of, some of that stuff you said to me, but it was written down as more detail, then go back in.
No, it's, it's very involved.
It is.
It's not, yeah, so thankfully, that was a great, um, layout.
And as you say, um, all administrators at the school level are trained to be able to evaluate teachers. And even in each building, I have requested that at least according to the size of their team. Uh, if, there has to be an administrator in the building who is also trained to evaluate in one of those three special areas. Many of them are training all of those areas. So they have four levels of training. And then we also use teachers that also participate in evaluations and, um, it's a, it's a good process.
So who evaluates principals?
Uh, that happens in C N A, C P, the E Ds.
The E Ds, E Ds. Who did prior to the E Ds? Cause that's a fairly good position.
So, uh, 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 what was that? Um, my, 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 my question is, um. You can't say, say, I want to be serious. We have people that are coming from different states. They'll go through induction one, they'll come to us, say, why am I, why am I going through induction two? Uh, last county, I've already passed induction one. Why can't I be evidence? Where after they go through our process and realize how thorough we are, that we look at every evaluation. She looks at them. We, uh, we went audit, we make sure everything's not problem. And after they go through that, uh, induction two, they appreciate. That second year of induction two, because they wouldn't have been successful. So since, so since we made that mandatory, that's one. That's your two hour success rate. It's going up without further ado. Yeah, that, that, that's, that's, yeah, a lot of teachers. I have heard some teachers say, well, why are we, why has been through, I, I, I don't know. They come from a different county, but they come from a different state. We, we, we tell them during orientation, providing you support, assist support, asking how did you? With, uh, your, your, uh, years of experience. Uh, it's your, we're just providing, and we've had teachers that come down and we put them on a contract. And within the first month, principals will call us saying, saying the way that we can, uh, suspend this evaluation. This teacher's not ready. Cause they weren't ready for principals coming in. Because we can't speak for other states, but I don't know what hap, what happens in other states, but. I, I, I would assume that they're not being evaluated and people, team principals are not coming in. They don't have mentors coming by. And other teachers in, uh, in the surrounding classrooms will tell you, hey, this person needs support and I. What, what they're supposed to be doing, we've got some plans that are ready. You know, the classrooms, I set up, I make sure you. So. They know we're serious about our evaluation process and they let us know something is not right.
And state, the state lays the foundation for the expectations for, um, evaluations for e- every district across the state. But also they give districts discretion to add their own little touch on, you have to do the minimum, what the state requires. But you can also add more. So when they come here and they have that mentor support, they go through our P D, um, experiences. Then they have become deeper characters. And you know, so then they get to learn how we do things. So that, that does change from district to district. So when Rex talks about the veteran teachers, maybe that are coming to us from other places, then they start to see the differences.
Making sure we're talking about classified evaluation, Mister Smith.
We've got it just tabled before. Al, also, with that process. All, the same way how the E Ds do, uh, evaluation of principal. Only principals in that building do evaluation on, on, in that building, or, or no?
They, yeah, they do. All the administrators within their building evaluate their teachers. However, we do have a collegial spirit around here. Um, as far as the evaluations, say, for instance, let's say, uh, evaluating a library. And if a school doesn't have, for whatever reason, maybe their librarian is a new librarian or, or young in their career. And they haven't been trained, they can borrow with the permission of that principal. And a librarian that is trained to evaluate a librarian to serve us. They do that without question because they know the tables could turn at any year.
Right, but, but then, 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 then not, there's no principals outside of the, outside of that building going and evaluating our teachers.
Not unless that, that principal has a certification that is needed on another evaluation. They don't let each other fall. We fill the teams as necessary. And then, uh, we do also, uh, bring in retired, uh, administrators if we need to. Who are trained and their certificates are current. And as Reggie said, their certificates need to be updated, renewed, Reggie can help on with that. And we, and they are great support.
So. Teacher in the building, build, build that evaluation process. Sit on the evaluation. So, so shoot, so there's no bias.
Man, you have to have an administrator on the team. And then you have a subject matter expert. And then that third evaluator, it just can be a trained evaluating. So it's a pure evaluation model. It's designed for growth and development. Um, and it's very objective because of the, the nature of the average of the scores of team members. Um, and classified, I know you're gonna ask about that. So just to let you take a drink while I, I address that. Yeah, all of our classified employees in the district are evaluated as well, but that's a locally developed model. And it's based on nine performance standards. And so that nine performance standards, principals or department heads will do those on the classified employees that work underneath them. So we evaluate every employee in the district every year.
So that concludes the E. Four point ten.
Okay, so this is together, uh, for those, for the board and efforts to, um. Bring out staff up to, probably comes the compensation. Enough compensation, not only includes all the support that we get, but also includes money. So this year, we made a big leap to bring out teachers up. Number one in state South Carolina. And we also gave all employees a percentage increase. So. I'm looking at data to see what the impact of that increases had.
I will have that for you, uh, in about another month or so. Um, that is an area that is addressed in our, uh, annual client, or our semi annual client survey. Where we take data metrics from the spring and fall each year.
Is that the teach up meet?
Yes.
So, uh, can I ask a question on that? Do you decide the questions, uh, I'm assuming because of, no?
No ma'am, um, all of those questions are, it's because it's a nationally database, uh, national database. Every institution that partners with teach up meet gets a. Every institution that partners with Teach Up Me gets the exact same questions.
Okay.
So and those questions are all built around um the popular themes in the research. Um and the other thing is they have to all be the same year after year after year after year for that consistency and validating.
Oh, is that, um and so one of those questions tries to capture the impact of salary on climate satisfaction.
Yes, ma'am, but that's one of the questions specifically says, um I am sad, I feel I'm satisfied, I am satisfied with the compensation I earned for the work.
Charlie, what are you hiding this from me?
Correct, it's a lighter scale, yes ma'am.
Yes, and um it started improving too, did you guys notice, I guess it came out a little late.
It did. It did, but um if I can.
Are we still number one? Sorry, Bridges had was number one, Bridges?
Yes.
There were fifty one thousand, two one five, yes, but statewide, Beaver County.
Well, it's.
Such like, great, great, yeah, all county runs schools where. Remind me phone bigger.
And and since we just implemented the the new salaries increases this year, we really won't know. But the impact is on retention until after the end of the school year. Right, and we do, and and I did not run the metric with, um we have a an October to October yearly uh vacancy report that we do. And so um we our vacancies are down significantly this year. Thanks to the talent acquisition team and all of the seven competitive advantages we offer, they're down this year from where they were last year at this time, so.
Yeah, in fact, uh we just in the tank because of. Each shortage, Corona, um but we are. But stop you. But we, actually, we we maintain or increased our uh retention rate by. So we didn't go in the tank.
We did, and our our total, you do have this as an as an artifact, our total retention rate. Um last year, we increased, and this is all, this is admin, classified, professional, and certified. Uh we increased from eighty one point one hundred percent in twenty twenty one, twenty two to eighty five point three five percent last year. So we were paying, you know, eight, over eighty five percent of our employees.
Yeah, I guess the one that's the obvious problem is.
Yeah, and that's that's on par with the nation, I mean, that's that's a national um issue, yes, yes.
This is on the um.
Okay, so um we're gonna move right into benefits. And we don't have a line, we don't know, just rolling in that already in here, you know, benefits and then the. You will come and talk to us about how we can wait. Disclaimer here, since this is benefits, there's things very warm, so as I speak, you know, retirement, this is all insurance, I mean, changing as I speak. So anything I say here now that is not true, it's definitely true, it's just you're missing your potential. Thank you, but um seriously, without benefits on package here. As you can see, we offer two different health plans, we have our savings, our health savings plan, our health standard plan. The health savings plan is commonly referred to as a low premium, high deductible type now. You see the um monthly uh premiums for employee only coverage, like nine dollars and seven cents. But that does meet the ACA requirements of your health care act, so you can report that to the IRS, that you will do offer a health plan. And so provide so the authority care act. And again, the deductibles on that is high, so it is considered that we have our health.
Did you know that you can, someone else is like that, helping you charge, they can put on a new rate and a tax rate, HSA, that HSA.
And that health savings plan, it does.
I'll be handing that information out, it's it's not a bad plan, you gotta return.
Exactly, um and a health standard plan here, you can see that. Now with our health standard plan, the district has subsidized those premiums from their true state rate premiums. If you're looking at for employee coverage only, the state premium is ninety seven dollars and sixty eight cents per month. Your county employees will pay sixty four dollars and forty cents for that per month. So it's the savings for employees of about thirty three dollars and forty eight cents per month. So it's right at about eight percent more of what the employer, if you notice them doing there, that's what the employer pays for each employee. Um for the coverage level that they may have with that plan. So you look at that, so again, somehow the employer is paying about eight percent more than what's required by the state for that. In order to have that health plan subsidized for the employees there. And this is all the way from employee only coverage to full family coverage. It's all subsidized for this um with the district here, that's winter health. Then you have um on the next slide, there you have our dental and dental plus and a vision um premiums. Now, the basic dentals for employees are just employee only costing numbers. There is an employer um portion of thirteen dollars and forty eight cents, so that is what the employer pays each month for that for employees. And then again, you can see with the basic dental plan, there are very low charges for employee child, employee spouse, and full family premiums on that. And now the dental plus plan, that is truly, it's not a standard loan plan, it's a supplement to that basic dental plan. So the employee decides to add that dental plus, it is all employee based premiums, there is no supplement, there is nothing that the employer pays for them to keep that plan. And then if you look at the vision plan, the vision plan also is a um employee only plan, there's no employer information that is kept on that plan. So if you decide to enroll for the vision, those premiums that you're looking at, some monthly trims, that the employee's a eighty percent. And also, what I forgot to mention is with that state health, any health plan that an employer goes for. There's a basis of like three thousand dollars that the employees cover for and no cost to employee. The district pays a thirty two cents a month premium for that. There's also a basic long term disability that's attached just to being enrolled in the health plans. And there is a employer cost of three dollars and twenty two cents per month of that they will pay for employees some. And then we have our um, we also offer employees opportunity to do a term after life. They want anywhere minimum of ten thousand dollars, up to five hundred thousand dollars based upon their salary. And the cost some, it was basically one of the employee's age and we write this one right now. So matter of fact, in June, where there's premiums are going to be to decrease a little bit, because right now it's fifty eight cents per ten thousand per unit. This drop is decreasing to forty cents for every ten thousand, up until they reach the right ages in that, that sixty to sixty four, they don't stay the same. And then also what I'm looking at, what I love about too, what we have done, we have bought it, um we're working with Hub International. And we bought in some additional policies, individual policies that our employees can enroll for, that's not offered by people insurance, by state policies. And as you will see there, some of those are critical illness, or short term disability, and universal life accident insurance. All state cancer policy and hospital state policy, these are all individual policies. Um any benefits eligible employees can have opportunity to enroll for any of those um policies. As coming on as a new hire, during open enrollment period, those are the opportunities that they can enroll for those. And then if you go on retirement, it's a big one. Employees are required to contribute nine percent, that's state mandated, that's by South Carolina General Center. So there's no influence, and but we get some employees that call, say, can I decrease that, or can I increase that? And the answer is, you know, because that is set by South Carolina General Center, that nine percent that employees must contribute. Now, on the other hand, in New York, um right now, it's contributing twenty three point eight one percent. Each employee, that's in in a retirement plan, that's what we, and if they choose, if the employees chooses to participate in the state optional retirement plan. Where you have one of the four oh three B vendors, it's almost like a four oh one K, because they get selected vendor. And their money goes into that, five percent of what the employee contributes goes directly into their um or can't count. And those are just, those are some of the benefits um that's there, you know, it's coming up. And then this is one of the big packages, you'd be surprised how many new hires reach out to us before we decided to come here. They ask questions about insurance, retirement, what's required. And that's a big war, because we get state transfers coming from other schools, this is in South Carolina, when you get here, they're paying less for the Alexander Health Land. And they're like, oh, this they're saving money, and they're they're over the long run, and they're they're exciting of now then, that's what I got a little bit to give from.
So what what is um, what was the philosophy or thought behind um the and for the standard health plan? Um having the district. Decrease the employees premium. Right, did I understand it correctly, this is what the state mandates, ninety seven, but we do sixty, but but the employee only pays sixty four, so there's like a thirty three dollar difference.
That goes way back to about two thousand and four. Because then, and especially kind of with the classified staff, we weren't getting increases. The teachers, the state increases were mandated by the state, the teachers didn't even increase them, and assurances were going up almost every year. And that was the way that the district, I mean, to offset the fact that there weren't increases coming in. And so they put a classified staff and they started subsidizing um the premiums. Before then, we used to have the, what was all the blue choice health plan, we have an HMO and all of those. The state dropped the HMO because of um poor participation awareness, so they got rid of the HMO. There was a blue choice um plan that was there, they switched out that for the health saving plan. Because like you said, the health saving plan, they can give the health savings account. And what I like about the health savings account, if you if you're in that plan, is that you keep that money, you don't lose it. It's not a lose or lose type money, when you put that money in that account, it's almost like a checking account. Keep it in there, if you leave us, you can still have access to use that money in that health savings account. But they did it as a way to try to offset.
So you, I'm sure you know, my next question is, so the board decided to subsidize health insurance premiums. So. I'm just, not that I actually have this information, but what is the total cost of that subsidy? And and no, I'm just wondering versus putting that money into employees' pockets. I I'm just just throwing it out there, because I didn't realize.
We have a lot of a bunch of six hundred here to us, that's.
And and how many um of our employees don't take advantage of the health plan? And therefore, this is an additional amount that employees are being subsidized and others are not. And I'm just, for example, I never took the healthcare ever, out of all the years I was employed, I never took it, because I, my husband's military.
Okay.
But I didn't get that extra little, you know.
Exactly.
Same here.
We don't. I know, I think Robin has more.
I'm sure there are a lot of same here, so I can put it out. Yeah, so, but I I didn't realize it was a board decision, I thought it was a state mandate, and like.
It's a board decision, you take that, you take that state, put all your money in tax free, gross tax free, just give your healthcare receipts. Huge thing.
No, but I'm just saying, so how much are we worth, you know, putting the money, taking this and why I've been distributing it to the employees? Say, hey, look at yours, I know it's not much, it's like thirty three dollars for this, it's sixty three though. If you do the employee's spouse, I I just, the math real fast, it's sixty three. I mean, then you now put that into salaries.
I mean, now, when you think about putting that into salary now. So now what we're gonna do, we're required to pay the full state rate back on for the premium because we can't pass anything off. So that thirty three dollars that you have just put back in that employee only pocket, if they they may have it as a free tax deduction. Which means it's going to be withheld before this number for the state federal tax at the same time. I'm not getting that thirty three dollars, because that thirty three dollars is going back up to the limited fee insurance, because now you're making me pay the full. While I'm working for that health insurance, so it's not a same, it's not adding anything more to the bottom line. For some of the ones, so my all that have that one. Right now, we have about two thousand seven hundred and thirty three participants that have some type of one of these some plans or something with the district. Out of that, because I just did that ACA report for last year, I can tell you, there's about three hundred and fifty three that do not have one of the health plans that's offered. And I only wanted those three hundred and fifty three because of being military, retired military. And I don't have that coverage there, with that. And but when I look at it, and I look at the percentage of what's who's involved and the different families and stuff like that. And again, that is one of the big draws for employees that's coming here, because they're, and believe it or not, the monthly premium. And they're like, that's it, that's all, and I'm like, yeah, that's it, that's all. And now that is like a, and I I didn't think that that would weigh such a big.
Yeah.
Um part of the decision, but it does, it does as to whether or not they may want to come and work here.
Very interesting.
And that same question for the uh twenty three percent, too, is with one of the timer. Both of the the state um.
That's what the state requires.
So so that I would like the same question, she she did that, um in 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 terms of um.
No, I mean, nine percent, the employee has to be nine percent, and the district has to be eight one.
Right, right, so right, so they're paying nine percent, they're paying nine percent, you're paying twenty twenty three or eight percent. So I saw, so that's a comparison, is that they're not very, not necessarily.
I think the state's requiring those amounts.
Yeah, it's got to pay all of it together themselves. Basically, they pay that nine percent, put that twenty, that twenty three.
I don't know how it works, I guess it's like four oh one K match, employer has to match your money, so maybe sometimes.
I mean, eh eh right, but 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 to my point is, every employee but may 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 not be doing that. Okay, so basically, so the twenty three, twenty eight one is a is a statement that it do?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that that, okay, well, what what so therefore, I'm looking for the statementation to be on the side of that as well, because that's how I see it, reading this. It comes across as nine percent of state mandated, but not be not be not be twenty three point eight, five point eight one percent. Does that make sense?
Got you.
So that's why I.
Yeah, it just is not written there.
You're getting me clarified, or, okay, so other, yes, thank you, I think that's.
Actually, thank you, you work hard, and actually, that is a big, that is a big um uh part, because um. I was in the therapy the other day, and that's why, that's why one of the departments in Befus lost a lot of their people is because of the insurance and the insurance. But that's very, very trying, not realizing, I'm talking about. About a lot of people, I one time, I'm doing the department, they changed the insurance, and and they changed the search in Befus County, and and those other people walked away.
Okay, thank you so much, you were very careful.
So we know that limited uh benefits are not just limited to the health and dental, uh life insurance and stuff. He used to not talk to us, she's been waiting patient on there, uh about some other employee benefits that we offer.
So Rida and some of my team members have talked about our competitive advantages, and we're really excited and proud to be. So I would now was one of the only districts in the state that offers both no cost mental health counseling for staff members, but also no cost childcare. Available to not only our staff members, also to ESS employees who we partner with to offer the childcare program. As well as our food service and transportation department, they don't, their children aren't able to participate in that. So we're very excited to offer our epic childcare program, as well as our own mental health program. You'll see on this slide, um uh that black box is from the Island Packet article where they talked about our mental health program. Um the one thousand hours is actually what was delivered last school year from the time that we launched to the end of the school year. So we launched April eleven through the end of um June. And then in July, we started over, and from July to October, we have delivered over twelve hundred hours of um mental health calls. Mental health counseling to our staff members, um so, and that's through Hello Hero, who is our partner agency that is providing those virtual. Um sessions, and then Robin, if you will zoom into the photo at the very bottom, to the right. So in the center of that photo is our um our superintendent who was recognized, um we did a nomination for him. For Superintendent of the Year to be recognized by Class Class Link and RTM at their Fall Congress for those two programs that we offer. Um and we received a lot of compliments from um and that that um RTM conference was attended by people from across the nation. And they were in awe of the fact that we were offering both of those benefits to employees um at such a time. Because, you know, retention is really high on everyone's radar, and this is something that we offer that gives us truly a competitive advantage. It's not just saying it, it's not offering good service to it, but it really is giving us an advantage over um just, you know, other agencies that are not. um just, you know, other agencies that are not able to provide that. We're able to give to our employees a peace of mind of not having to worry. If you've got a little of a school-aged child, do you have to figure out what coverage is going to be like for childcare? And if you're, if you've heard anything that's within our community, you can barely find any childcare that's available, that's reputable. So we're, we're really excited to be able to provide those both to our staff.
Can you speak a little bit about, so there is not, not in the school, and where where do we have these childcare facilities?
Yeah, so they're in all of our elementary and middle schools. Yes, so they're offered after school, so from from an elementary.
I was thinking it was like, yeah, like all day, young kids.
No, 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 it's it's elementary and middle school, each each school houses the program. So at elementary is from two forty-five to five thirty, and as the secondary in the middle schools, it's three forty-five to five thirty. And that allows employees from the district office to also be able to have their child enrolled, have time to get off, and then be able to get to wherever, whatever site they attend. So if a child, let's say, attends Okati Elementary School, they're able to stay after school with their parent, we're just here at the district office, that parent doesn't have to worry about, do I have to get them to the Y U C A, the Boys and Girls Club or another program, they can stay right at their school. Uh Dr. Donald Smith has come back and is working part-time with us through the epic program to provide support to schools, so that they actually have a structure to the program, and it's not just a free-for-all, everybody just shows up and they just stay. So there's an academic component, there's um the, of course, the benefit of of being able to burn some of that energy, uh but it's it's more structured, and we work with the ESS to be able to make sure that every staff recalls.
Does every school have this?
Every middle and elementary school.
And then, why would teachers want to have your school care until five thirty, or is it something that's more geared towards?
It's it's open to all, so it's a benefit. So if you think about it, um teachers may have meetings after school, teachers may be doing after-school tutoring, like there are other programs that are available that they're able to take advantage of from that they, we give them that time, but then we also wanted to extend the program long enough that will allow our staff members here at the district office, who usually don't get off until four thirty-five, to be able to get to wherever it is that their child is in the home.
And I feel like I saw that, that's out of, is this coming out of Esther funding?
It is.
Okay, and that's an Esther funding item, isn't it, somewhere on that?
Oh, yeah. And hopefully, um the board will be able to continue this fund, Esther funding.
That's right, yes, we want to be able to write about this.
Oh, absolutely, because for teachers after school, this is huge, or they don't have to run again, their kids, and then come back to it. If there's a meeting after school, when there's a meeting after school, you know, or something, so.
And not to mention the waitlist for the number of, the limited number of programs that we do have.
Right.
Um we're, we're in a resource wealthy community, but after-school childcare is not something that we have that is just open and available to everyone. Um and the costs add up to that, so when you're talking about, you know, competitive salaries, and then you're taking away from that by having to pay for after-school childcare, that in itself is an advantage that you have, not everyone is able to offer to them.
And most, many schools offer before also, right, like for adults.
So that that is a per-school program, that's not through the M M program, but that is completely separate. So some of our elementary schools do offer that, and I think some of our middle schools are offering it as well, and it's at a minimal cost.
Yeah.
And not just employee kids can participate.
Yes, any child.
Any child can participate, yeah, before school. Okay, that would be, so so this is limited to.
District employees, ESS, um food services, and of course, transportation are our employees, so they also are able to participate.
Bless your.
Bless Rob's, yes. But our new company, um the nutritional.
Yes, nutrition.
They are, their staff are able to um participate in that as well, as well as ESS, because we can't expect for them to have children and then provide services to us and not be able to have their children. And you'll see that that number increased from three hundred and seventy-nine that participated last year to four hundred and forty-nine, and we expect for that number to continue to grow um as our, as our talent acquisition team begins and continues to hire more people. That is something that they talk about from the very beginning, and those people are able to enroll their children.
And then, so go ahead, no, no, I was just saying, and then too, when you go back to look at how the age group of our teachers, right?
And so we're gonna start referring to these as award-winning programs now.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Yes. Um so that adds to this one.
Yes.
The mental health program, that's also funded through Esther.
Yes.
Okay, and it's Hello Hero virtual program?
Yes.
Do we, does our employee health coverage not cover?
So that is completely separate, so an employee can seek out through their mental health benefits through PIBU. Is it PIBU?
Yes.
Through PIBU, um to be able to seek out mental health services if they choose to, but that is at a cost to them. So the the um our insurance does not fully call, cover that cost, so there is an out-of-pocket cost that comes with that if you go through PIBU, but if you choose to go through Hello Hero, um and we initially started with eight sessions per employee, so an employee can receive up to eight sessions, and that could be, they could decide with their therapist how they want to space those those sessions out. Um but we decided that looking at the number of people who were asking for additional sessions, um we talked with Ms. Walton and the team from Hello Hero, and we now expanded that to twelve sessions that an employee can receive as their initial number, and then each year, we're able to restart that number.
So um how much is it to, is it a copay with PIBU?
Um yes, there is, but it depends on what your insurance is, and I don't want to speak out of term, those are probably different. Give you, so it depends on what insurance you have through.
Exactly, it depends on the child plan, maybe the enrollment, if they have a health plan, also whether or not. Because one of my questions is, I hate to pay Esther funding for benefit, if PIBU would pick up some of the costs, like, you know, in other words, can subsidizing, you're shaking your head, sorry.
Yeah, I I just don't, like, that's, I just don't know if the state's gonna do that or not.
Do I subsidize?
Subsidize.
Would the district be subsidizing the copay, like if there's a hundred fifty dollar visit and it's a point dollar copay, and you can subsidize the help they pay? Rather than being, I'm just, because it worries me with Esther funding, because my big concern is mental health for students who don't have insurance, or whose families can't afford mental health, so I just, are we rolling that, do you want to talk about that part, you're gonna bring that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have a session. Um so we're a part of.
So we're expanding Hello Hero, but we also have local providers that are assisting as well. And for those students who, not to get too far into what you're saying, we're talking about next time, but for those students who do not have the coverage, to be able to engage in their service or have a copay, we're able to work with those providers and take on that call, so that was something that we rolled into this.
That's what I'm saying, so the state will allow you to take on the copay costs for students.
For for students, I believe, I don't want to speak out of term, so let me just check with finance to make sure that that was written into Esther. I know for particularly from the adult side, I'll have to talk to Denise Matson to find out.
Because I know, like, with healthcare, sometimes you can write off the copay, you know, the mental courtesy, but you're still gonna bill. Like, you can bill Medicare, but you might write off the copay, but rather than just provide, pay the service out of pocket, I'm just wondering if the dollars on the table.
And that I said, I don't.
We'll have that worked out. You're right, I'm running, sorry. I'm looking for that, so um you said that there were twelve hundred hours between July and October? And 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 all virtual? I would record that, right, thank you.
All right, so as we hand the plane here on this, um the last um operational expectation uh subcategory was talking about climate, and it's really about making sure that um our employees have a climate that is conducive to them coming in that um to to perform all of their work duties, so that our our students are happy, successful. And um one of the things we use as a report card on this would be the semi-annual upbeat survey. Um that's, again, comes from a third-party uh vendor that we partner with, um allows a survey, uh respond respondents to be anonymous. Um we gather that data twice a year, once in the fall and once in the spring. Um and then based on that data, we're able to make some strategic decisions, and also based on that data, um what I'm gonna give you today is a ten-thousand-foot view, but it's also individualized to each school. And our principals work with executive coaches, and they also work with the executive directors um to set goals for each of their own buildings in order to, you know, increase employee happiness, employee satisfaction, and ultimately, uh employee retention. Um so what this looks like for our certified staff is in that left column there, and Robin's gonna zoom in. These are the top five areas where um ninety, anywhere from eighty-five to ninety percent of the uh more than seventeen hundred respondents um rated as strongly agree or agree, and those are the areas of care and commitment, self-efficacy, uh equity, evaluation, and inclusion, and I want to highlight the evaluation piece. We've talked a lot about the support that we've given through the induction program and our evaluation, our comprehensive evaluation system, and employees do feel that it's fair. They feel that it accurately represents the job that they do in the classroom, um and they feel that it's um it's it's doing what it's intending to do, and that is to build capacity. So um and if you notice, all of these five factors here from our certified staff, they're pretty much altruistic factors, meaning that our employees generally enjoy coming to work, they feel they're competent, they feel they have the skills to do the job that they're being asked to do, they feel they're evaluated fairly, and then in terms of equity, they feel like they have equitable opportunities for all um all employees, it doesn't matter the the demographic group that they live in or come from, and then in terms of inclusion, that they, that everybody is included um within their organizations. Same thing on the classified on the other column, um in terms of strongly agree and agree, we have care and commitment, self-efficacy, satisfaction and purpose and belonging. Um and and this is our classified staff, and this is what their perception is, and I think we had maybe four or five hundred, four hundred fifty to five hundred respondents in this particular category, so it was enough to make sure that it's a statistically significantly group. Um and again, satisfaction and purpose, I think that that's important, because they feel like they're satisfied with their work and that they're contributing to something greater than themselves, and so that's the, an altruistic factor um that that our employees are saying, like, you know, we enjoy coming to work, we enjoy the job, and we feel like we can be successful at the job. Um and I think that that's a good way to end um our presentation of these fifteen categories um of the operational expectation number four.
So we'll open up any other questions to the rest of them.
Um what do you feel to the server right here, conservative, or the server right in the district or outside?
That's upbeat, yes, an outside company, outside company.
So so I don't know what that process is.
Um, what what do you mean, what's the process?
How how do I get a survey?
Okay, so, yeah, all right, we we sit down every, um we sit down twice a year, once in the fall and the spring with uh rep, upbeat, and we determine dates on our calendar that fit within, because one of the things we don't want to do is continually give our employees survey after survey after survey, so we look for a time when it's kind of you're, they're in their groove, um it's convenient, and that we can guarantee a a high response rate. Um and then we we set a window for two weeks, so that window is open for for two weeks, uh our window just closed on October thirty-first, so we won't have that data back from the fall of twenty twenty-two. Um but the survey then is automatically generated based on our email list serve that we have. And we work with technology to make sure everything is whitelisted, so that when you get a, an email from an outside company, that it goes right to your inbox and not to your trash or your spam or whatever. Um and again, it's based on anybody that's in units at the time that the survey is given.
How many questions are there on the survey?
Some around seventy, at least.
Seventy, and they all fall into these five categories?
No, ma'am, there are several categories um that they fall, there there are several categories.
Are we gonna see all the categories?
That's up to uh probably the superintendent or HR, yeah.
The other questions are geared to the sites, sites. And that is within buildings, within the apartments, um and that that information, which, I guess, follow that on the individual manager of that building. So that would be totally up to the superintendent is what I think is true. Because that data is what the coaches.
Yes, executive coaches.
The executive coaches from upbeat works with individual principals, individual department heads on those things that occur, that they can only control within the building, but not, this is just individualized.
Yeah.
So the salary question that you were earlier, what's that, agree with that?
Salary falls under compensation, um and that that piece, we do cap, we can capture that, I did not mention that, because I would tell you, um if you want to know the metrics, I have them here. Um in the fall, forty-seven percent of our certified staff members felt that they were fairly compensated, um and forty percent of our classified members felt they're fairly compensated.
I want to see the negative.
And that was in the fall.
To me, the negative results, the result, I just don't want to see where.
Well, and with the negative results, I'm, as I mentioned, with these positive results, they're altruistic, meaning that they're kind of internal to the employees, mission-driven. The negative ones, um I knew that might be asked, so I have the couple of.
Well, and I think to your point, because school climate, I want to see who the HR department is.
Good about it.
Well, it's also, I wanted to do some stuff, how people feel about their compensation, if, you know, a factors outside of the district, but they're very critical to the board, and we're looking at budgeting and stuff like that, so I kind of want to, even though I I give you credit for the five categories that are important, that HR had a lot of, I do want to at least know who the categories are.
Sure, I don't mind sharing that with you, I'll tell you this, though, um the other categories, in particular the areas where we had, we didn't score favorably, um those are governance and policy too. They they deal with administrators, leadership, and policy and governance, those are things that you mentioned are external to the employee, um and those are uh factors that do cause some some turnover, um the the intention of turnover.
So sites.
Well, in some ways, they refer to more on the board than they do on the HR, you know, so it's still good for us to know kind of where we're supposed to group in.
Yes, and then also, the 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 uh in terms of the the um the survey, the survey paid for by the district, right?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that 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 that's a, there's a big two, that's a whole other, that's that's paid for by public uh public dollars, right, and 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 that 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 the uh that, I believe that the survey is probably public information, it's just uh just based, same as a principal's evaluation. Evaluation, a principal evaluation can can be for it. You know, uh that is public information, right, it's unfortunate, but it it is, so I almost want to say that 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 survey uh it's probably to go along with, I believe, within the same parameter of of that.
Well, I I'm gonna let out, you know. Superintendent, if you speak to that, I believe that principal evaluations are not.
They would be, that would be personal.
Personal.
Exactly, it was session. That was, I think, it's a personal evaluation, but in general, category.
No, that's nowhere for one, I I didn't have, I could, I might for a check, because I think the uh evaluation is public, and if I was a teacher for me, so far, it's I haven't, the last, the last conference I was at, when a lot of people said, no, no, and the legal person came up in front of us, and she said, no, she said, a teacher has a principal evaluation, that that is public information. Yeah, yeah, that 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 was, that was what, that that.
The South Carolina law.
Yes, she she said that the that the teacher evaluation, unfortunately, is public information. That was, that was, I I just, that was very shocking, and I would not put that, so it's.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a little bit of confusion about, wasn't there um opportunities or parents are able to find out if a child is being taught by a certified person, but their specific evaluation is not public. Because remember, at one point, there was a, had to be a letter, it was actually sent out by, yes, the school, to notify the parents whether or not the teacher was a certified person, but not their specific.
Well, I'm saying this, this the evaluation.
I've heard that that.
Yes.
Get clarity.
I think in terms of our operational expectation, I think that we've covered, I I I hope that we've answered your questions sufficiently regarding the fifteen areas that we're responsible for. I know last year you had asked for data, and I think we tried to do better than that, so.
And 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 in terms of our, I I believe I've heard the, what's your name?
My name's Brenda.
It's Brenda, Brenda, I was talking about uh about relationships, I was trying to get that, and my, and so to that, any questions to my people? My question is, what relationship with cabinet, any agency?
So, there's one of them. Yeah. And that's part of Handshake, our platform, it's a recruiting platform that we utilize, so what happens, all of the agents, they have the ability to partner for Handshake, and they do, which then, what happens is all of their their students, their extension students, sign up via Handshake, so they register them, so we have access, what we do is we go in every month, we add in any new schools, and sometimes they're H S Qs, sometimes they're Hispanic um supported institutions, so all of the different diversity institutions are included within this platform, which gives us access to attend virtual recruiting fairs and in-person recruiting fairs, um and three thousand candidates, so, and Alabama State was one that we were able to attend last year um that was virtual, that was supposed to be a Handshake specifically.
Right, I mean, I I I hear what you're saying, but to me, that's not, well, district decides that, that's just not, that's not good enough. I I I'm looking for a personal, a personal uh partnership or personal issue in in terms of of uh getting what they, was what was sort of aid, or two, two, like, I was, I remember when I was in school, I remember uh Dr. Davis, that she used to have certain uh schools that she would reach out to and can get teachers, and also, they would also have some of their teachers, they just have their staff from time to time, with with being in our building or doing different things, I'm talking about in terms of that relationship. That that's a program, that that's almost like a, to me, that's like a placeholder, or 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 once I shoot it off, I'm looking for a special one for the extra mile, so to me, to me, that placeholder is. So to me, to me, that placeholder is not, that, that's not, actually not good enough, I, I, I'm looking for a.
So would you want them to, because I think, I, I don't disagree, and we have, you know, you know, Deion Sanders was, I hope, now?
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, favor is the person of intent. We have some opportunities, so maybe we can just report on, you can add in HBC, so we can see.
Alright, I think, you know, what we, what we try to do here to the Ambassador Smith's report on what we're currently doing, I mean, we're certainly open to more suggestions as the, as the time goes on, but, um, that, that's what we've done in twenty-one, twenty-two, getting into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, so.
And I think this is an excellent opportunity for agency, especially the business center here, especially the Shane Lynn and all that history.
Yes, we used, we used in the past, because I did personal recruiting. I can share with you later, uh, a lot of, uh, it's hard to recruit African-American population at those schools we went to. As many HBCUs as we can visit. Uh, first of all, there's not a whole lot of African-American students in education.
There's not as much in HBC.
They're not, they're, they're not there, but we can get that information.
Yeah, I think that's what it's, it's, I mean, show your work, ready?
All the HBC students, we will be, uh, probably seven, eight years ago, we tried to bring them here so they can see our district, we're gonna take them around to their schools, but we never get them, never get them to commit. Allen University, uh, Clapham Stair, something like that, I, I, I see, I, I see where, yeah, partnership in with, with a program, I was just doing the business stuff with, actually, Allen University, where they are partnership, it was about, it was about the school districts. And they, they actually tried to formulate a similar, a similar mindset, where basically because y'all came, that's a we're in partnership, then we're gonna send our students, so we're gonna tell our students, hey, wait, 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 hey, look here first. I don't need for that type of relationship, when, 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 when we say partnership, I don't think that's in the past, in the past.
We talked about that out, out, outside as means, I can share with you.
That we have done that, and I can share you, share with you with the results on it. And, and, and so why?
Yeah, and just to add further to that, we did attend the South Carolina State Virtual Job Fair. These colleges, they choose to partner with Handshake, and then we have, we have to go to the Handshake to actually register and sign up and, and then to attend. So this is the direction that these colleges and universities have chose to go in, and then in order for us to access their students, in order for us to access their job fairs, this is what we have to do, to be able to be in contact with them now, and to reach out to the different organizations.
So, you said that, that's, that's go, that's go, that's government mandate?
So this is the way that they, this is not government, this is what, this is what, this is the program that yes, that they chose to use, especially during COVID, so when everything went online, this was the best way for these colleges and universities to help their students find employment.
It's like match.com.
And then the, the program also, also has allowed us, so, you know, there's a lot of out-of-state college recruitment fairs that will not let us attend. Unfortunately.
Because of what you're saying in there.
Yes, you know, speaking, that's. The great thing about them is, is that these students are on Handshake. So we can still go in and access these colleges and universities that will not allow us to attend your job fairs, and we can still reach out, and we can still.
Right, okay, so, getting back to your comment, first of all, I wanna say I was, this is what I've been hoping for in terms of data. I have like a much fuller picture, and I love the initiatives, I love, I mean, I just was very happy with all the data. It was very extensive, there was a panel discussion with the whole thing. So I just, I'm very, um, I just wanna thank you and your team for putting together what I think was a really comprehensive, um, H, HR, extravagant. The only thing that remains that is on the agenda list that we're, that I don't think was in here that we still need to address, um, is the, uh, effective handling of grievances and complaints, because that is another item.
That's, uh.
I think we can bring it as a standard.
Yeah, that's in the, that's under governance on the executive summary. Um, under governance, we have our administrative regulations and our personnel rules and procedures. And within the personnel rules and procedures, uh, which is, uh, and grievances, which is, uh, OE four point one five. Excuse me, um, we do have a process for handling that that's in place. Um, I guess kind of as I leave. Um, what am I talking about? No, it, it, was it, was it, it's, it's, it's part of the OE, yeah, it's part of the OE, and our process for that is outlined in our administrative regulation, and that is a process that we follow.
Yeah, but I think, what I'm just saying is that I know it's on the agenda, um, topics, and I think it's something that we've had conversation with that. Was not as clearly embedded in this, oh, yeah, I understand the monitoring aspect, but I know that that still lives out there on the horizon. Um, so I think that we still have to have that conversation, but I'm super, the data, I, uh, it did give me, you know, we're, we're paying a lot of money for all these programs. It's nice to know what we're getting out of them, and I also really like that you have, or you're looking at, looking effective. Because if we come down to budget again, what, how do you go in, maybe, that'd be a nice point in the programs, or have any great impact.
I think to that, to that, to your point there, this is something we always do. We have all this data all the time, this is how our department functions. Last year, it may not have been articulated as well, it wasn't articulated as well, and I think it's because we moved from the performance expectations to the operational expectations. And in terms of the governance and reporting, nobody really knew what to expect. Um, having that conversation last year with the operations committee gave us more feedback as to what you were looking for, and, and so we tried to meet that standard today.
And I, I think also, um, where other departments can't do periodic reports, certain things, we don't do that. Um, everything that we do is just operation. So that's why it was difficult when we presented first time to bring anything in, but here's what we do, what, uh, here's just this time, what we did was explain the process of how we did it. So that's the difference between last year and this year.
Yes, I think it was really effective, um, but, you know, I think one of the things we deal with the most is people coming out with HR questions, concerns, complaints, and especially with all the news of teacher shortages, so we can really be, if we're informed, we can be a lot more useful. Out in the committee too, and we have to make budget decisions in those sorts of things, or we have to defend
Sure.
decisions, having all that, this data, so I feel like I really understand what HR has going on a lot better after today, so we decided to bring this to the poll board. Right, so I mean, that. Well, it's in the, here's what I'm thinking, let's just go ahead and count the monitors, you have outlined the thing, but they are still gonna have to present OE fifteen, and it's also OE, uh, four point one five and four point six. The effect that is on the agenda, so, um, and I don't think that what we have here is adequate for what's being asked for on the agenda. So I think we need a bigger presentation of that.
So then move back to the, um, operations committee, recommend to the poll board its acceptance of OE four.
Oh, with the, you want to put the exception in?
Well, I mean, I don't care either, how do you wanna do it this year?
Since it's on the agenda and you guys are already prepared, I think you can go ahead and tie it up on the OEs, because it is not. But we understand that we're like, accepting.
Well, but I, I would go with you, we're seeing this.
That's my notion, we're gonna go there.
Or, or, you want, you want to say, I hope, I'm not saying that, and because of the fact that depending on when, when it's committed, please, uh, we don't know who, maybe you go share with the, with the rest of you.
I think they're bringing it to, I mean, it comes on the board on Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday's coming up, but it comes to the board on Tuesday.
Right, but, right, but I'm talking about, except terms of this could be added to the change.
Well, let's, hold on, because let's have a, and then I'll explain to you what I think is gonna happen, and we have other conversations. Okay, so I second that motion, it looks like Mr. Campbell.
Being left around by.
Yes, okay, so, um, I second, I'm in favor. And then, so Rob will have that motion coming out, and then I might report, um, I'll probably, I mean, I don't, if you want me to give the, well, actually, you got it, if you wanna. Cover the highlights, and then he'll be there, state additional questions. Um, so they'll come on Tuesday, and then we're gonna try to get that, that policy changed.
Um, we need future topics or additional meetings?
We do need additional meeting for facility, so, yeah, thank you very, very much.
Operation, that is, maybe, maybe, and the grade safety, that alone.
So next operations. Okay, so we need a second meeting, um.
Right, thanks.
What do I need a device, and again?
In that second meeting that we're gonna have, because we're gonna have, have another one for, um, ARs and stuff. Um, do you wanna do, uh, one five, point, one five, and one seven?
They, they're bringing the whole thing on Tuesday to the full board, right? So, no, no, okay, yes, we're talking about, um.
OE four, four point zero?
Yeah, OE four point zero is gonna come to the poll board, and then you guys have on a future topic, on the agenda list is, um, the complaints and grievance process, Angela had asked to put that on future topic, and we talked about it at agenda setting. Did we put it on for next week?
No, we didn't.
I was, I was in a gender study, I was in a work session.
It's not a work session, no.
Cause that still needs to come, be more fulsome exploration of grievance.
Okay, 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 okay.
Oh, Kathy.
Yeah, I think, um, that we said at agenda setting meeting that that would go to operations committee.
Okay, so we'll bring that at the next operations committee in December, with the AR for title line.
Okay.
Will that work?
Yeah, and, and I just want everybody to know that, uh, we did look at the title nine, and this with the current, right, this is now the future, right?
Okay.
Yeah, and so we got that, so we have, the, the, yeah, that's right, yes.
Not the.
Not, the, the new regs are.
So, then to this, at this point, I thought, why don't we?
So that'll be the second, you know, the meeting in December, which is the second Wednesday. And I'll give them time to bring all that in, and we'll get that done before the county changes.
Okay, that will be the fourteenth, is the next board meeting?
No, no.
Operations, the next meeting in December, or operations would be December fourteenth.
And we'll have title line, I'm gonna have, and the operations complaint, thank you, Kathy. Anybody talk about?
So, even, I'm just confused, so, there's a motion I just made, we're bringing the entire OE four.
We're going off on OE compliance of OE.
Are you gonna bring up in your chair report that we're gonna look at those?
No, I just, we're in another operation meetings, and we're gonna have a special highlight on Ford and.
Yes, uh, now, we need a special call meeting for operations to deal with, we do have some ARs, employee, we have safety, we have to have case for, um, May River, and we need to have, um, destruction.
Yeah, so we got, we got nothing going on during the holidays?
So that, the May River thing, um, in according, maybe, what, whatever your needs were that you said you need to have for the month of November.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. For us, you see, we did, that the third order, well, boy, to you in October, with, you know, was not in the agenda. And also the monitoring report for OE safety and security that's doing the labor.
Okay.
So, a lot, I just want to be in.
I can do next Wednesday, I'm on the way to Beaufort, I'm on with the airport, so I can do, uh.
I could do next Wednesday, Robert could do next Wednesday, because I saw.
This is after our meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes, yes, well, that, I, I can, good morning.
No, I can do that, because I, I gotta drive up to Charleston, pick up my mom.
Okay, but I might not know about first six. Yeah, this is for other operations that are.
Yeah, and then November fourteenth, for, yeah, then, and then we'll do the. And also, so we could do title nine, I need some.
Yeah.
Now, we just need to get, because we're operating under OOX now, because we can't update.
Right, but I'm never gotten updating.
We, we, we can't, the case is twenty twenty, but we just need to make it better. We have, we need to have more information.
I was just checking, so I'm going home, it's like.
Yeah.
I think it's like five, okay, um, and it's probably gonna be a, at least an hour and a half. Um, so can we say do two o'clock?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
It's, uh, yeah.
You want sixteen?
Yeah, with data, yeah. Okay, yeah, and then a work session on Friday.
On November sixteen.
Five and Austin. You're going to Austin? Where you're going to see them?
November sixteen, we are going to do, Lydie is going to give me the information of, of the A, so we have ARs as well.
A few, the, with Dr. White's group, yeah, a few, so it's a few, so that we have a timeframe. I think it's to know what we need.
Are they big, kind of, just like, you just changed the.
One of them is on athletics, because I'm the one, I just need to get Carlos and Dr. White. We needed to update that athletics one.
So what do you want, do you wanna do, um, level nine? The sound of nine is already done. So you don't, you've already updated, we just needed to.
No, I can, can you title nine on December, because we got May River, okay, we got a lot of stuff.
Okay.
And title nine generates a discussion.
Okay.
If it's okay.
Yes.
Uh, who's the district? Mr. District.
AD.
So we're gonna. Two o'clock.
Say ARs. We have, say, at the start of July, when I, we had, talk to him to try to figure out a transition.
And what we do in the May River thing.
Oh, that's okay, okay, so I'll try to, um, ARs, safe, but we brought that.
You brought a few more things in?
What time should I slide?
You could say two to four or something.
That's, that, that's a good thing, and I'll be like, I got it, so today I had a meeting for eleven thirty, I had to do it at twelve thirty. And then he was a week, and I was waiting, like, I'm buying media. And they, I finished, and finally, I just, I put my computer, and I started like this, I'm like, I'll see you guys, and I just walked out of the room, and I called.